The joint one, 429.
You can't see Commissioners, they can't see Council, and they just, by default, they stored it in Commissioners.
Good morning, everyone. We're gonna get started with the Pledge of Allegiance today.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. United States of America, in a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna go ahead and get started with our council agenda. I think they just finished, so we'll wait for them. Okay, great.
About that?
Good morning. Did I already get our pledge?
Great, excellent. Okay. We'll go ahead and call that Board of Commissioners meeting to order, and we'll start off with an opening prayer from Mr. Pat. Morning, Pat.
Morning.
Are we ready?
Our gracious heavenly Father, as we come before you this morning, we thank you for one more day that you have blessed us with. Father, we need to realize that you are in control, even though the world seems out of control. This morning, as we gather for this meeting in here, Father, we ask that you be the principal of this meeting. Whatever we decide, whatever we do, we pray that it will be to the furtherment of your kingdom. We're thankful for our Commissioners that we have here who have dedicated their lives to trying to serve this city and this county. We ask that as they make decisions, which are many in number, that they make them to the best of the community that they are serving. And, Father, we're thankful for the counselors that we have here this morning. We ask your blessing upon them as they make decisions. Father, we're just thankful for another day that you have blessed us with, and we pray that we will use it for you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Okay, um, meeting minutes. We have those in front of us. Did everybody have a chance to review? Are there any changes? Do I look for a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mike, you made the motion, Tony seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion was made by Mike Sprinkle to accept the minutes. Second was by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We also have our confirmatory resolution in front of us for the amintim services. This is just the next step in getting things, keeping things moving. So we have to have a public hearing this morning. I don't believe Grant is here, so I would like to open the public hearing. Are there any comments from anyone regarding this? Yes, Bob?
Bob Gruey, Economic Development.
Can you please step to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, everybody. Bob Gruey, Davis County Economic Development. I'd simply, for the sake of the public hearing, go on record to be very supportive of this abatement as the project in question is essential to Westgate and our efforts to support NSA Crane.
Any other comments? Not, we will close the public hearing. Uh, we also, we need a motion, I believe, in order to accept this.
A move.
Motion made by Matt. Second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the shelving. Lauren?
Good morning.
Morning.
So I am adding a shelving unit to the current shelving in the basement, and that is gonna be for confidential records. So it's gonna lock where everything else is open to the public, and the Commissioners did sign the contract. I just need to have it appropriated through my clerk perpetuation fund, and there's plenty of funds in there to do that.
Questions? Not, I look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor?
Aye.
Just real quick on that shelving, just for everyone's reminder, we had to put a reinforcement wall underneath it because of footprint that that compacted shelving sits on. So our QAW met with, I think probation is underneath there, but you're only under, or is that prosecutor? So the prosecutor is under, right underneath it. So they had this pocket of a wall that we could either wall off and make it look like a wall, or we could just put like a three-foot partition, which is the supporting piece, and have two open areas for like cabinets. So we told him just to do that instead. So anyway, down the road, when people wonder, why is there that thing there? It was either lose all that space or be able to put a couple of file link cabinets. My last attempt to ensure people know down the road why, why we did that.
What you're talking about is the shelving unit in the new courthouse.
In the new courthouse.
This is for an extra shelf downstairs.
In the basement, right.
Yeah, different project, but yes, both shelving.
Will, will that, will that shelving downstairs remain there?
Yes.
Or will it be?
No, there's no room for it to move back. It will stay down here. It's records that we don't get in every day. Older stuff, yeah. Thank you.
Then, the actual courthouse shelving. We had the information in our packets from Tri-State Systems. This is what you were referring to, Commissioner Gabhart was referring to. And that is going to come out of the budget for the courthouse. For that courthouse shelving. The renovated building. So we will need a motion to approve. If there are no questions on that?
A move.
That made a motion.
A second.
Second by Mike Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now the salary ordinance amendment. Um, this was for the overtime that was paid or accumulated during the snow removal. And thank you very much for the Highway Department on doing that. Great job. So we are looking for a motion to approve that to, so that the overtime can be paid. Um, has made a motion. Second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Uh, next up is Superior Court and interpreter. This is for a two-week trial, an interpreter that's needed for the two-week trial. I'm just wondering, and I guess maybe Greg may be able to answer. Yes, please. Thank you, Judge.
Um, I have, also have a claim pending for interpreter. Superior Court does have a two-week trial, non-English speaking folks, and the law requires that we have to have an interpreter. And in these cases, the interpreter code of ethics says they have to have two interpreters on anything that's that long. And so they charge, like, if you can see on my claim, it's $8,000. That's for a three-day termination of parental rights hearing. Supposed to be right after your meeting today because of a medical emergency. It got bumped to a month or two down the road. But, um, we have to have two interpreters. Uh, they charge mileage, they charge a fee, they charge hotels, they charge for equipment. So mine's gonna run about, I'm only asking for the 8,000 because I, I think I can cover it when I ask for budget next year and kind of figure out what we're gonna have and how many we're gonna have to have. Uh, but I know theirs, they have to do the same thing for Superior, and it's a two-week criminal trial. Uh, so a lot more moving parts with juries and attorneys than I have on a TPR, which is just a court trial.
This will be mainly for the jury trials, interpreters?
This, the one in Superior Court is a jury trial. It's a two-week jury trial, high-level felony, and, uh, does require the, you know, the law says we have to have the interpreters, and we have to provide them. And, you know, interpreters do a couple different duties. They're, they're interpreting everything everybody says two different ways, and, and they have the equipment to, so that the defendant can hear and attorneys can hear, and, and it's a, you know, it's just a slow process. It's very tedious because you have to make sure everybody stops. Uh, you know, we, sometimes we have a tendency, at least attorneys have a tendency, to start asking their next question before the answer's been given and translated. So, yeah. And, and, and of course, in a jury trial, they're gonna go through jury selection, voir dire, the opening statements, the witness examinations, the arguments, so reading the jury instructions. So it's, it's much more tedious and slow-going. It's gonna take a long time. And they, you know, and it's, there's a, a code of conduct for interpreters that the Supreme Court's adopted, and they're, they're all following it. They're also, they have to be certified. Um, you know, on the phone, like I use in here a lot of times for Jen's cases, like, there's a service called Language Line that the court provides, and we don't have to, but we can only use that for basically non-evidentiary hearings. So I'm just, what I'm asking on the Circuit Court end is just for the, the one I know I've got coming up. I had a little bit of money in there for interpreter, but not enough to cover the 8,000 it's gonna cost for that three days. Uh, so you see why Superior's with two weeks is, is much more.
Thank you, Judge. Any questions? We would look for a motion to approve the interpreter for the Superior, and we'll go ahead and do the one for Circuit as well.
A move.
That made a motion. A second. Second by Darren. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And Marilyn, I need to ask you for some more money.
Yes, sir. I do that, yes.
My other claim, um, it's for, um, mental health evaluation. When we have to grant those, this one's just a mental health evaluation, so it was one doctor. Uh, we had about 700 in a category, and the total bill is 1750. Uh, when we have to do competency to stand trial or insanity, defense comes into play, then it's more because you have to have at least two doctors, a psychiatrist and a medical doctor, and of course, that's two to three times as much. We've been trying to keep that down and skirt around some of those, those issues. But, um, as you probably aware, especially in criminal cases, mental health is, is always, generally is always that issue with something. So a lot more competency evaluations that have to be done now with, with adult criminals and with juveniles, so. This costs, so I'm, I'm just trying to get to, get this exam that we've had, already had done covered and get this Dr. Paid. That's what that means.
Thank you. Any questions? Or a motion?
A move.
Tony made a motion. Second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
A process. They just sit down and talk to them, and then they, in a short period of time, decide whether they're saying or not. Well, it's an evaluation. A lot of times they can do. It takes a while. Processed. Competency. Thanks.
Next up, we have a Tabor Owens for the capital improvements. The construction budget was set for 2024. We weren't quite sure what the total amount was gonna need to be to fulfill that construction budget for the renovation. Um, so this claim is for, this additional appropriation is for the amount needed for that Tabor Owens. Any questions on that? Not, I look for a motion?
Is this an actually increase of what we expected, or is it in line with what we?
Yeah, we're still, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, we're still on budgets. There's some contingency costs. I think we have maybe 100,000 left in contingents. Um, we, um, so every, every additional cost is coming out of contingents. But right now, we're, we're still on budget of what we projected.
The capital improvement pieces here for the additional, this is just the permission to spend. It's all still within budget. We just need it for the appropriation so that we can actually expend it when we get the invoice.
Move to approve.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, that brings us to the next one, which is for additional cost capital improvements. Same scenario, um, for that 35,000. Tony made a motion.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next is for the contingency capital improvements. This amount, does, does it have to come from County General? Or do we have some options on that?
So, all these amounts are what was based off of the actual budget. And so we didn't know whenever we were doing budgets last year through the month of June and July, on where and how much was gonna get spent. We worked with Derek Whalen, Wherlen in regards to all that, and we didn't know when bills would be coming through once they got them approved. So the difference is, some of this is just the swing of the calendar year. So the, the County General was deemed that it would be the last bucket of money to be used toward the project. So this is what we're estimating the potentials up to, to be put in.
We used that bond, I forget if we bonded 3 million? I can't remember. We bonded a smaller 3 million, paid five, or, or the opposite. So we used the bonded money first, and we go to the County General, so.
Either one of us, go ahead.
I would like, if we can, I would like to pull at least 2 million out of the CUMCAP pay on this to help our general fund, you know, down the road that we're not depleting it. I've been here a long time. When I first got on here, I asked what the CUMCAP money was gonna be spent for, and what I heard back then was someday we'll remodel the courthouse. So I would like to pull a large chunk of the CUMCAP money toward this request.
I, I think the CUMCAP money should be used to make our payments, our, our bond payments. It's gonna be the same, same difference, except we'll, I, I think we'll have a cleaner amount hitting that. What is it, like 465,000 or something like that?
I can verify what the actual balance is as of right now, but there was five different funds that you all had deemed for us to utilize.
Yeah.
And then we also had the bond. So out of the CUMCAP, you guys had originally gave us, or gave us permission to spend a million dollars out of there as cash toward the project, and then the potentials of whatever, however you want to pay the bond payments later, still needs to be determined.
So we're already doing it. We're already set aside.
Correct. So I mean, between the, um, uh, the bond, the edit, rainy day, CUMCAP, and County General, um, and some of the remaining ARPA funding that was remaining, that's what it went for.
I, there, given my thought process goes back to what we've heard about Senate Bill One coming up, and maybe some cuts, shortfalls, and to, the bond payments will be paid over a number of years. I'm just trying to shore up what we would have in the general fund that way, so. Or maybe we wouldn't spend it down this night. My thinking on that.
We already got a million, billion coming out of there right now.
Right.
For, for this stuff.
But we'll still have, got a balance of 2.5.
So, yeah, that's right.
And we use that down the road for a number of things.
I can pull the specifics, but it's, it's got tied to what, it can be spent on, but typically capital expenditures.
More discussion? Uh, yes, Tom?
No, I'm good.
Okay, looking for a motion then to approve this.
I make the motion.
Tom, made a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one up, uh, for an additional amount for the insurance on the property liability. The insurance on the building, property liability. It was an additional invoice that came from Bliss McKnight. Um, so we're just having to pay this. I believe it was just, um, equipment being added, changes being made. So this was just an additional that is due on the insurance.
The other insurance always goes up, right, Marilyn?
That's right.
No, the, the cost of the courthouse, the assessed value of what brought the courthouse. Forbid it to suck.
Tony made a motion. Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we then have our additional overtime that we discussed earlier for this snow event. Looking for a motion to approve that.
Move.
Matt made a motion. Tom made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aries. And the AED program. Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. I apologize for my absence at the last meeting. I had an emergency, medical emergency myself, so couldn't make it and couldn't answer questions. Would be glad to tell you why we're asking for this money. We've received it to be put back in its original account. So over the course of several years, the Health Department has dispersed roughly 132 AEDs across this county, um, from private industry to schools to healthcare facilities. Um, we, we paid for many of those, and we also replaced the pads, the batteries. It's become so popular, uh, many entities that we just simply don't have enough money to put them in, um, come to us and say, can we get your deal? So we buy them, and they reimburse us, and that's what this is. So we are very happy to do that. And, um, again, I want to say how vital it is to our community to continue this program outside of fire and EMS who use them regularly. We've had three saved lives by private people. They're used every day to give people guidance on how to give CPR correctly. Um, and we, we really, really want to continue it. So putting this money back in allows us to continue purchasing them.
I think our question really was, like, the maintenance, the maintenance and the training. Who's, who's doing all that?
Sure. We do that. We do it all. We, um...
That was my question, training.
Yes.
There's some training involved.
Sure. Well, right now, Andrea Brown is our educator, and she holds, if not monthly, bimonthly CPR and AED classes across this county here in this building. Um, she is the one that does the training. Um, we also have Mallory Swartsentruber, a prior employee of ours that continues to do it. And when they're used, they bring them to our office. We download all the data, do some training with the individual that used it. We replace the pads, the batteries, and then ongoing, when they expire, we replace them too. So we're really the point that handles all things AED in this, in this county.
How many do we have out there, Kelly?
Uh, well, like I said, we've given 132 of them, and that's what I have in inventory, um, out of our office. Now that could be one or two here and there, but we keep pretty tight inventory on that, so we know how to replace the pads and things of that nature, so. Um, that is every two years, I believe. I'd have to make sure that's right. Andrea's the educator, and I just sit in her class when she tells me to. So she keeps up with all of that. And the fire and EMS do their own. Um, well, actually, we do several for them. Uh, we just did one in Odin last month, I believe, but, um, our educators handle all of that.
Questions for Kelly? Thank you.
Welcome.
Look for a motion to approve.
I make the motion.
Mike Sprinkle, do you have a second?
Second.
Matt, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, this is, the next up is the one for the motor vehicle highway department for the overtime. Looking for a motion to approve that we discussed earlier.
A move.
By Matt. Second by Tom. Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, coming out of the rainy day fund, this is part of the Reno budget, budget again for the construction. Looking for a motion to approve that. Actual cost on the capital improvement.
Motion to approve.
Tom made a motion.
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the, what we, Lauren talked about earlier today, the coming out of the clerk perpetuation fund for the shelving. We need a motion to approve that, please.
A move.
Matt made a motion. Second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aries. The lost team, they have received a state grant for some equipment. Uh, this is the new program that is going to be done through the coroner's office, uh, for families of individuals who have, they've lost someone. They have received this money. They're going to use it for laptops, computers, uh, different things, that they're going to need. They are gonna get this in a quarterly manner. Uh, so he's going to, Tyler is going to keep us informed of what he's purchasing with this money as he's buying it.
Matt, I don't, I don't remember that that was his original budget that he shared with us, because there was, um, some compensation involved in that too, I thought, when he, when he presented that to us at the budget.
When I spoke to him this week, and I can clarify, that this was for equipment only. Is that correct?
As long as it's gonna be, as long as it's gonna be used for equipment, I, I could support the motion.
And I asked that he give us a list of those things that he would use.
And I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Tom made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Darren. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, then we have information in our packets. We have the West Bog's Minutes, the Visitors Bureau Minutes, and the Hospital Finance Committee information. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? We're looking for a motion to adjourn. A move by Matt. Second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Please, it's all you guys.
Okay, good morning. Um, this is a quick courthouse renovation update. The, uh, electrical panel that was supposed to arrive by April 7th, I think arrived early, um, so they're in the process of getting the courthouse powered up. It looks like we're still, uh, on time and on budget. Um, we did have, uh, the mitigation issue with the floor tile, with some asbestos removal. When they put the covering over the floor tile, some broke loose. So they went ahead and, went ahead and mitigated that, and that was some of the additional costs. But, um, should be almost through, um, all of those, so, um, so far, so good on that. Any questions on the courthouse?
Still looking at June to start moving?
Yeah, we got the move-in dates all, kinda hammered down by the date, um, in, in May. Dale has an extremely detailed schedule of who's moving when and in which days, and then we'll wrap that around trials and court hearings. So we're still looking at, get everyone moved in by June, and then our hope is to have the storage unit cleared out by the fall. And we'll have a summer yard sale out at the airport. And, uh, and they relinquish that hangar back to EDC, who graciously built that for us in six weeks, so. Yeah, um, it's TBD. Everyone's been updated. I know probation's doing a walkthrough this week, I think. Um, we'll do another walkthrough next week. Um, so yeah, so far, so good. And a great thing about it, we can tell all the department heads that you can either stay put, or you can, you can get what you get. And so far, they want to get what they get, so. Uh, but no, they've all been, they've, they've all been fantastic, because we've had to kind of tweak a few things along the way, so. Still looking at a May move, move, move-in date, June-go-live date, so. All right, everyone should, should have received a copy of the minutes from the March 25th meeting. Gentlemen, you have any questions? A motion made by Commissioner Cook. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Keith. All in favor, say aye. A motion passes. Next up, we got the highway meeting, or the highway men, or Highway Department, I'm sorry. There was no highway meeting this morning. Good morning, Chris.
Morning. Um, I guess the first thing on ours is to open up the bids. So these are, looks like we got two bids, one from EMB paving, one from milestone contractors for our 2025, uh, dash one CCMG grant, that we've got awarded the grant, so now we're trying to get it down to contract.
And I think everyone knows, but the nine o'clock trial got canceled, so our, on one hand, our time crunch is no longer there. On the other hand, let's get out before lunch, right?
Well, I actually came prepared just to open bids and not give an update because of the trial. So, uh, but the first one here I'll open is EMB paving. I made sure the required documents were... I made sure the required documents were there with the bid bonds and stuff that are required. The amount of their bid is $1,293,475.
Hey, Chris, what, what were we, what was the grant amount? What were we hoping this project came in at? Do you remember?
The estimate that I had was 1 million, basically 1.5 million was the estimate that I came up with and submitted. It was a little under that, but 1.4 or something.
That's fine.
And it's for basically 10 mile of road of resurfacing, milling, resurfacing 10 mile of road. I guess I didn't use that to make it a little bit more professional. I do got a knife on my side. I just thought about that, I could use that. Sheriff deputies probably wouldn't like that. So, the next one here is for milestone. Make sure the required documents are there. And it is for $1,653,027. Both these guys do tremendous job bidding and giving us a good price and a good product. But, and we've worked with both of them many times over the years. And the process of what we have to do with the state requirements has changed now. And Mike Keith was at the, the road school with me and went through some of this stuff. What we're required to do is basically, this time, we're really required to expedite this process. Our process alone, when we get awarded the, the CCMG grants, we gotta advertise it for a week and then two weeks off, then we advertise it for a week. And then the next commissioners' meeting, we open bids and then we wait two weeks and we accept them. So, we got two months tied up into being able to get under contract with a, with a contractor for the award that's given. And the total is four months. You get four months, you have to be under contract. If you're not under contract, then you lose your federal funding for your project. And even if we do ours in two months, or end up to do their side and go through the State Board of Accounts and everything, it takes them two months. So, right now, there's four months required and they're talking about pushing that and making it even smaller. So, in this case, with the two, the two bidders and working with them in the past and they've got the required documentation with, submitted with their bids, I would suggest that we make a motion to accept the, the low bid from the lowest and most, however, granted responsible.
Yeah, I mean, assuming all the paperwork's in order, all the bonds are in order, which typically with these two vendors, they always are.
Burn them two more weeks.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve the low bid with the condition that all the documentation is in order. A motion made by Commissioner Keith, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes.
Okay, so we'll leave this and I'll leave this with Jen and them and they'll, they will get you guys to sign this and then I'll send over another one that I'll have to have you sign.
You'll be paving by this afternoon? All right. Thank, thank you for the bidders. These, both of these vendors have been wonderful to work with on all the projects in Davis County and really appreciate both taking the time.
Another than that, I don't, I don't have any update. I will say, Kelly was up there talking about the AEDs. We have three of them at the county highway. We've got one at our, at our shop that we keep there. And then we've got two in mobile units for our two foremen. So, if there's a need, they can get them to wherever they go. A lot of the time, the foremen are working with the larger crews. And we have had training, but I think we're probably due for some more CPR training and stuff. It's been about two years now. So, we'll get with Andrea on that, so.
Sounds great, too.
But I, any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer.
Commissioners, council, any questions for Chris? All right, thank you. Next up, the Health Department, mobile grant. I know there was, there was a deadline regarding for the grant submission. And I apologize, I'm gonna step back one second. I got LPA claim voucher for the old Highway 50 project. In the amount of, it's $975 with 80% reimbursable. Actually, I got three here. The one's $975, one is $3,462.90 and one is $19,660.47. These are all for the 150, the 150 West, the west of town, the section we took over. So, this is for the federal grant submission that we're, that we have in play for that project, so. And all, all this is 80% reimbursable. And there's a fourth one. Did I say four? Yeah, there's a fourth one. And the amount of, this is not a final amount. Looks like $8,246.85 with 90%. Two of these are 90% reimbursable, two are 80% reimbursable, cause some are state, some are federal. And construction engineering is, and preliminary engineering is what this is, all fours. I'd entertain a motion to approve all four?
Remove.
A motion made by Commissioner Keith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes 3-0. Kelly, good morning.
Good morning. Andrea Brown requested I be here in her place. She's at a bar for a clinic. So, in her paperwork here, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I did just put there before you the brochure of the source of the grant. It is an endowment fund that comes through, it's an agreement between Memorial and Deaconess and open to eight counties. It's, again, through an endowment, through those healthcare systems. And this application is specifically for what we call a, a mobile health unit. We, we've been saving a couple of years for something of this sort, because we are off-site in some capacity multiple times a week, providing shots, testing, education. And we have a provider, multiple providers for multiple visits types. And we, our nurses use their cars, we haul in bags in and out. We have mobile refrigerators and coolers we haul in and out. A lot of health departments have these units. In the request is an example of what this unit would look like. It's technically a, an office, doctor's office on wheels with refrigerators and a bathroom. So, Dr. Holsopple has been a bit apprehensive for several years, but now with an opportunity through a healthcare endowment grant, we would like to apply.
So, this is a trailer?
No.
But it's a...
We have a trailer, it does not work.
Is it a van, is it a truck, is it an ambulance?
Yes, it is, it is a truck. I'd have to look at the...
So, it's a vehicle, okay.
It is a vehicle. It is an office on, I'm trying to see here.
Okay, that's okay.
The chassis. It's on an E450 chassis. I believe, yes.
Okay, so your, your amount requested was $170,000? Is that...
Correct. We had earmarked in our Health First Indiana budget funds for capital, hopefully towards the future of a mobile unit. So, we have monies in our HFI fund and then we're asking for the rest, if we can hopefully...
So, it's a $235,000 unit?
That's for brand new, yes. And that's...
What are you getting?
That's that. What do you mean? Yes, it would be nice if there was a used model on the...
Your comment implies that you're not getting brand new?
No, we...
Okay.
We are quoting a brand new one. If they had a used one on the lot, we would prefer it, but...
Okay.
They did not have that.
Okay. And so, the other $65,000 is coming from HFI?
Correct. We can spend 10% a year on a capital. Last year, we had budgeted 15. We can save that. And this year, we have 50 earmarked in the budget for capital for a mobile unit. Hopefully, one day, to find something, an opportunity.
Well, I know these will have less wear and tear than an ambulance, but when I see the short lifespan of an ambulance, I mean, three years, when we're presented back with a request for a upgraded unit, there's no grant, I don't think there's any way I could support $235,000.
Agreed. It will not run 24/7 nor it will be lightly used.
Well, the same argument can be made, that the less you use something, the more it deteriorates, so. Okay. Commissioners, what do you think?
Grant won't be there when they want to upgrade it and they've already have it.
Yeah, that, that's the thing. Not gonna be used that much having it to be used a lot, then we gotta replace it, right, all the time? So, I'm kind of stuck where it's like, what, what? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, it's a future asset to maintain, it's future insurance cost, it's future everything. I mean, if this was something that the Health Department, like unilaterally was thrilled to have and just can't wait till they get, but I, I sense that this is a... I sense that the only reason it's being requested is because there's free money available for it.
No.
So, if there wasn't grants available for it, you would request $235 for a new one?
No, we would keep saving the maximum capital in our HFI and searching for grants until we could.
Okay.
And, and I understand the replacement, you know, knowing other communities that have these, these, these have a pretty long life. Isn't...
Whether it's five years, 10 years, 15 years, Kelly, but the point's still, this point's still relative.
Sure. And we would look at budgeting all supplemental expenses within our own additional funds, but again, that's an addition of an asset. And we are excited to have it. I may not say we are. This is something that's been wanted for some time, but just don't do good enough at saying what our needs are.
Commissioners, what's your desire?
How much time do you have before you have to apply for the grant?
Andrea said the first round deadline is, it's a competitive grant, so the first cycle is the 15th. And she was hoping we could apply then, because again, the competitive nature of the grant, there are other cycles, as stated in the brochure that I've handed to you. So, my assumption would be we could apply for another cycle, but her request was, Dr. Holsopple, that we could move forward with the first round.
And I mean, my, my, my gut reaction is just with, with all the unknowns. And I mean, we need to be managing our budget as if we're broke anyway. And here in a few months, we might realize we are. I'm just reluctant to add this type of cost and expenditure to the county. And, I mean, it's a nice to have, for sure. But, those grant monies, you know, your left pocket versus your right pocket, so. I would reluctantly move forward is what I'm feeling. But commissioners, what do you think?
I would definitely want a little more information, just study it a little bit more. If we want to table it or...
I gotta know the need.
Okay. Well, we got seven days. I'm not sure we're gonna get that accomplished in seven days.
I'd be more than happy to give you the need. Our annual report includes a great amount of data of all of the services we provide. Whatever you would like more to know, I would be glad to make sure that's sent to you.
We need to move on, yes or no?
Right now, probably no.
Okay. All right, it sounds like there's not a general desire to move forward with it at this time, so.
All right.
Thanks for your time and sorry for the... Okay, next up payroll claims and we'll move over to the Visitors Bureau. Is there anything from the audience, from the council, from the commissioners?
The only thing I got is to tell you happy birthday.
Ubelated, thank you, thank you. Yes, yes. Once you get past 40, you know, it's just a sad reminder, right? But thank you for that.
Gets worse, doesn't it?
Awesome, I appreciate all the, all the outreaches, all the messages. Great day, thanks for being here. Okay, with that being said, I will keep the commissioner meeting in session, but we'll go ahead and approve the payroll and the claims. If, can I have a motion?
Some, some...
Oh, sorry. A motion made by Commissioner Keith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. A motion passes 3-0. Now, we'll move over to the Visitors Bureau update. Amber, good morning.
Morning. Having me. So, just for the sake of your time, I know you guys have had this marketing plan on your computer for a couple of months now, so you're pretty familiar with the contents. I'm just gonna briefly hit on some of the points that are in here. Are you gonna, do you want to pull it up on screen for... I'm gonna start on page four, I'm just getting right into it. So, when I first started, it was pretty clear to me, just from talking to our board members that are part of the Tourism Commission, that the definition of tourism in Davis County was widely viewed differently. The inkeeper's tax and what they could spend it on varied from person to person, depending on who you talk to. So, I knew right out of the gate that I needed to speak with our state representatives, with IDDC, the Indiana Tourism Association, and as well as our regional partners, with Discover Southern Indiana, to see really what can we spend the inkeeper's tax on? What are we allowed to do with it? What should we do with it? What are other communities doing with it, so that we can kind of stack up next to them? So, I learned all of that and in doing so, I've reported back to our board, made sure that they're kind of in line now, they all kind of see it the same way. And in, in doing that, we use that knowledge to compile this marketing plan to make our mission statement, which really is the defining factor of what tourism is in Davis County. So, the reason why the inkeeper's tax is spent so differently from community to community is because it's all about how that community defines tourism. So, it varies because of that, that reason alone. So, our mission statement is our definition in Davis County. It's the projects that we want to focus on, it's the ideas, the pride that we want to hone in on for tourism. Next was the event assistance program. So, we had an event assistance grant in the past that was, you can ask for up to $1,000 for grant support or for marketing support. We just didn't feel like it was robust enough to do the need of the quality of place and quality of life that we're kind of gearing towards now. So, we did away with that program and we've created three new grant programs out of it. The event support grant, which is, there's 10 of those and they're up to $1,000 each, so it's pretty similar to the prior one, but it's not just for marketing needs, it's for any grant or any event assistance that you may need. There's also the advertising grant, which is five of those, up to $3,000. And then there's the major project grant, which is only given out once annually, but it's $10,000. So, that's kind of, an example of that is like the West Bog stage that got built, the commons space that the Tourism Commission gave to. So, it's, it's projects like that that are meant to last and are not just meant, meant to be a, a one-off, right? Next is the feasibility study for the Cultural and Event Center. This is something that has been talked about for years, even since before I started with Economic Development. So, I knew that it was a passion project of our Tourism Commission and the, the community at large, right? We really, we sit back 1.5% of our inkeeper's tax monthly to go towards that center, but we really don't know what that center looks like, right? We don't know if it's a cultural center, we don't know if it's a sports center, art center, whatever it will be. So, we want to do a feasibility study to kind of tell us what is that space? What should it look like? What's gonna work in Davis County? What's gonna attract visitors and also be useful to the locals, right? So, you know, right out of the gate, the Tourism Commission said, yes, we want to, we want to do that, because we're already saving the money. We really need to know what our goal is in doing so, right? Because if, if we, at the end of the study, find that it's not feasible, it's not sustainable, then we won't do it, right? And we're gonna put those dollars towards something else that could really use our attention. I'm gonna skip over to page five.
From, from a feasibility studies. Got someone in mind that is...
So, we've started taking bids. So we've started taking bids and we had preliminary discussions with HWC Engineering. They did our downtown revitalization plan for Washington. So we were really impressed with our work as an economic development. We had a lot of, we had about six months of time with them and we were impressed with, with the results. So we started there, but then we quickly realized that we wanted to open it up to, to public bids and to see what other kind of prices we could get out. So it's open right now. So page five, I'm just going to hit on the event calendar. So we did have an event calendar in the past. It just didn't like, the community still didn't realize, you know, where to go for events, how to find out when things are coming up, where they're at. And, and just one hub of information and knowledge, right? So we wanted to create a more robust event calendar and we have done that now. But the, the big key factor of that events calendar is who's putting in those events, that, that information. In the past, it was the Visitors Bureau Director and it just takes a lot of time, right? It's too much for one person to do. So we have come up with an incentive program so that our event organizers are now filling in the events on our calendar. It's, it seems to be working so far. It's only been up for about a month now, so it's still new, but it is exciting. We can talk more about the incentives later if you're, if you're interested in that. I'm going to go on to page six. So we hired a photographer for all of our major local events, up to 15 events for this year. And really that, that kind of leads into the second goal here is, which is in developing a visitor's guidebook. So Davis County doesn't have like a comprehensive guidebook that says, here's all of our attractions. Here's all the places you can stay, places you can eat. It's really, you know, here's a pamphlet of this one single attraction. Here's another of another single attraction. And they're all reliant on those attractions creating those pamphlets. So they're not, they don't, you know, connect to each other and there's very few of them, right? I have more pamphlets for out of county tourism than I do for our own. So I knew right away that we need to create our own visitor's guidebook, but we don't have any pictures to put in it. We have very few. I have some pool to, to pull from, from the EDC's library, but other than that, most of the things you find on social media, they're taken with a cell phone and they don't, you know, you can't transfer them over well into publications. They don't look right, right? And also not just for the, the guidebook, but we also want to use those images for billboards, magazines, ads you see on social media, all the different things. So it needs to be quality images. That's that. And then page seven, then I'll, I'll stop and I'll open it up for questions. So when I started again with the Tourism Commission, you know, a lot of the, the board members have been on the board for a while. So I knew right away that I wanted to establish new relationships with other people across the county so that we, that way we could in the future, you know, whenever a board member's ready to step off, we could, we could have someone new with new ideas come on. I'm really excited that this year we added on Lisa Wilson with the Chandelier Barn. She's had, you know, huge success with the Chandelier Barn and she's got some great ideas. But I hope to continue growing those relationships across the county to make our board more robust. The Bison, Tenille Bison, it's included on here. I know it's kind of a weird one. I just kind of recently found out that the Bison Tenille Bison was at the courthouse previously and it's now in storage because of the courthouse renovation. So this is just one little project that I hope to utilize more, pull it out, make it an attraction for people. It's a great art, art piece. It's a great photo op and I just don't think we utilize it enough. And then lastly, just partnering with EDC on a hotel study. So it's been talked about for a while too, that we need more hotels in the community. So Bob and I are working together to, to discuss, you know, what that next step is. Any questions? I know that was really fast, but I want to leave as much room for questions as possible. Yep, so we have Marilyn McCullough as president, Kit Kelly, Parks Department, Nathan Rim, Lisa Wilson, Lori Hinkle, and who am I missing? Debbie Goodwin, how could I miss her? And there's a seventh one. Already did Lori. Mayor Rhodes, of course, happy to have you here.
Is there a magic number?
Seven is the, per the ordinance of Davis County, you guys had decided upon seven. So the Commissioners get to pick four of those, four of those people and the city of Washington gets to pick three. They appoint them. And we can make recommendations, but overall they get to decide who sits on that board.
Yeah, so the, the organizational chart, obviously, especially as we move forward. I mean, we've always done well in Davis County as far as working with the other municipalities. But the way, in, in my, my head, I've always viewed the Commissioners and the council just being a hand in glove unit of government that oversees the visitor's mission. You know, the Commissioners appoint four, the city appoints three, but then the council implements the inkeeper's tax with the Commissioner's approval. So we, so as the money starts to accumulate and as the vision starts to get clearer, it's just critical that the council and the Commissioners are at the spearhead of that. So that, so it's a vision that we all can buy into. Not that if the city gets ahead of us, that we can't catch up with them and, and agree to whatever vision. It's not a us versus them. But the Visitors Bureau for my first five years has just been this entity that meets whenever they meet and they do whatever they do. And it was just kind of a forgotten about. And then when Joe Morris came in and talked about the sports tourism and the Visitors Convention Center got everyone excited, we raised it from 5% to 9%. But we wanted to ensure that all the money just didn't dissipate into whatever. So we took the 1.5 of the nine and allocated it for our future. We call it an event center. Really it's a future something that the council and Commissioners decide. So how much are we bringing in on that 9% on an annual basis?
So it's about, I think they, they budget about $385,000 annually.
On the 9%?
Right. Now, all that's based off of, you know, if you have good numbers, if you have, you know, a lot of people staying in your hotels that month or if they don't, it could vary.
Do we know how much we actually brought in?
From last year, Marilyn, I'll defer to you on that.
Were we close?
I think it was about, yeah, it was about 380.
Okay, was it close to 385?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We, we want to be clear here on how that money is public, right? Some people just don't. Anytime you stay, it's hotels, it's Airbnbs, right? Anytime you stay lodging, and there is a time period on that. If you stay longer, is it 30 days, I believe, or something like that? Then that, that tax then is not for, anything below that camping, those type of things get that tax for that. So it's my favorite tax of all taxes. I'm not a fan of, of over taxation. This is my favorite because it typically taxes people outside of our community who are staying here. And so that's how they make money, if you will.
Okay.
On that note, on the budget allocation, percentages are great, but I do like real numbers. Do you have those real numbers?
Yes, I can get them too. I don't have them here today.
Like I would ask, like, how much are we spending radio wise and this?
And that, I can take that.
Or billboard wise or?
Yeah, so billboards, we have allocated $20,000 to billboards. They are quite expensive and that's for an entire year and that is for billboards.
And those are where?
Terre Haute, Evansville, Knox County and Jasper.
Terre Haute, Evansville, Knox County? And then radio?
Radio, let's see. Right now, $13,650 to radio. That takes care.
For the year?
For the year. Well, for, well, half of the year, I'm sorry. We, as the board, we are doing a trial basis of the radio ads. So the incentive, incentive program I mentioned before, if an event organizer puts their event on our calendar, then the incentive is that we will public, we will publicize that for you for free on Shake Broadcasting, right? And that's three times a day. I believe it goes to Kentucky, so it goes pretty far. We are, per the marketing plan, we're looking at a 100 mile radius, so he is within that radius. But it's three times a day, seven days a week that he does his segment on the events. So it's pretty, pretty widely known, but it's $13,650 for half a year. We're doing a trial basis. If it works out really well and people seem to, to really like the calendar and the incentive, then we'll, we'll do the full year. It'll be twice that much.
Is the goal just to be getting them to put it on the calendar or is the goal to promote? Because it seems like radio is really hard to measure if it's effective, right?
Right.
Including, and Dwayne's great, I hope, I hope he's not getting mad at me for this because dude works his tail off for our community, he really does. I know. But it is really hard. You know, we did something, I asked him, hey, how many listeners? Like, I can't tell you. Well, I can literally use social media and tell all kinds of them, right? Four way cheaper. So that's what I'm, I'm wondering what the goal is in radio.
Yeah, so it's a few different reasons. One of the reasons was the event assistance program that I mentioned before. A lot of dollars were given to, to organizations that were already using it on radio ads locally. So we felt like we're, you know, maybe this will take away from some of that, that we won't have to ask for these dollars because we're already, we're already getting into that, right? It is for marketing too. And I know it's local, but local first, right? Like for marketing, if your local people don't know about it, they're not excited about it, they're not going to share it with their friends. They're not going to share it on social media. Family that are out of the state, they're not going to do that because they don't know or they're not excited about it. So really what we're trying to build on is creating that knowledge, making sure that they're aware and they can share it with others.
I think you get a lot of people from the, I'm, I'm more of a radio person, I am a social media person. I don't mention my age a little bit.
No, just kidding.
No, but I mean, I, I'm a radio.
I can see both points, but I can tell you that for me, because I was, I want to hear what's going on in the morning. So I listen to the news, that kind of thing. And, and that has been a good thing. There's a lot of events that have been on there that I'm like, didn't know about. You know what I mean? And I'm here in this area, so it's been helpful for me in this local area. I know and I appreciate that.
I think it depends on who we're trying to attract also, right? With visitors, are we trying to attract our own in our own town? That's not a visitor, right? You see what I'm saying? Like, so is it effective? Yeah, Dwayne does a great job with his community calendar, him talking about it without getting paid per se, right?
I think, and I, and I think as you get into the events, that you want to bring family from out of state to that. So, you know, if they know that we're having a festival or event, a family come in and see the festival or event and they're going to stay in the hotels, right? So it does have some, I, I agree that it's hard to judge what radio is doing. But if we're not educating locally, then how are we educating further away as well?
Right. And your baseline for marketing is word of mouth. So if you're not doing that, then you're doing something wrong. And also, you know, whenever you have those people that are out of state, maybe we're marketing out of state only. You have them come in and they come to an event and there's no locals around. That's not exciting or inviting, right? Like there's something wrong there. So just the first step is to communicate that with our, our locals, but we will, we will be doing outside marketing as well.
I think that's where metrics is, you know, we've got to have analytics on that too. And you want to look outside as well and then you want to see what those, what those attractions are. So if you can provide analytics to everyone, that's going to be good and that's what you're looking for.
And you only know analytics if you try it, right? If you do it and then you get, get the feedback back. Not too much. The same thing with like billboards. I would be like, hey, Knox County, that's interesting. I have to put there. And again, it all comes down to what we define tourism as. We met with State Board of Councils, right? They were pretty vague and open on what that is. As long as you had some type of explanation, they were okay with it. They didn't even say what the explanation had to be, just some type of that. And to me, I, I want to look more towards how do we as a visitors can bring in? Because we're playing at a smaller level right now than most in the state, right? Not with our percentage, but with our money. At most in the state, and I would like to get that raised. Then the quality of life stuff happens with it, yes, but it also grows even bigger because we have more money in. I would love to grow the $700,000. That is, is kind of my, we can do that by filling up the hotels, especially on the weekends. But that's our, that's our goal.
One thing TC said, you know, the 9%, 1.5%. I'd like to just see the percentages don't mean an awful lot, but here's what we took in last year at the 9%. Obviously we know what the 1.5% is. What you're, you're planning to spend on each of those dollars, not percentages? Break all that down in dollars, kind of like a balance sheet and then, and then that's what I'd like to see.
I think last year the 1% accumulated to about $60,000, if that helps. But yeah.
But I think numeric dollar.
Yeah, I think dollar amounts would be great. And then also as you get some of these new AI tools and some of this technology, that's well over my head. It all goes back to like causational versus relational. And I know like with our seven, eight Airbnbs, we have less than 5% come in for events. So I want to make sure that we're measuring the right things because the money could still go up, but is it because of what we're actually doing? So the more data you can tie to that actual event, and some of it's hard. But when I think about, you know, just like the Chandelier Barn market and the Horse Progress Show, if the 10,000 people it brings in and just these different events, I mean, however you can measure it, the better that says we did this and we got this. And now the other stuff you still get because it's just fluff, but, but I think that would be important as well, so.
I do want to say this was put together very well. And actually you can tell a lot of thought, a lot of time was in there. Just an idea, it was actually put together. Appreciate it. Put in a lot of work.
Thank you.
But, but like, like Nathan said, I want to make sure we put in the work, the right thing. Think prime with events, with things. Placer AI, that was in your, that was in your report. That is something that will narrow exactly what Nathan was talking about down. I'm going to guess to about a 10% because not everybody has cell phones, not everybody. So there's going to be a 10% variance in things whether they're not, but it, but it is a great tool.
Yep. And we also have a competitor, a Placer AI, our regional partner, Discover Southern Indiana has access to. And they've told us that we could use that for any event we want. So that's, and that's just a free tool for us. So we'll, we'll have both metrics to kind of.
I would actually love to see compares.
Yeah.
I mean, both on, on a certain event, like if we know a big event, that would be great.
Yeah.
To notice, to even just say, hey, is it even worth paying for all this because we have this?
Yeah, and I guess the last comments I would add is just, just going forward as, as we start, as we, as in you all, start building off of this. I mean, this is, is extremely impressive. You know, continue leaning on the city, the council and the Commissioners. But at some point in time, you're going to have to get a little bit more linear. So, and again, it's, isn't it us versus them? But either reach out to both of the presidents of the council and the Commissioners or the, or the president of the Commissioners. I'm not saying it just because I'm currently the president. But as far as clarity goes, you know, otherwise you might get confused if you ask the wrong person the right question and on the wrong day, the Commissioners may not be fully aligned. So as we get to that, more of that decision-making process, I would say it's the Commissioners, the council and the city. That would be, because we can't do anything without the council. They can't do anything without us and then the city would be cooperative no matter what.
Yeah, it'd be great to be in on those. Try to unify as a county. Whole county, not just with a visitor. A big piece. Axes.
Excellent.
I would just comment too that yesterday I learned at Westgate Authority Meeting, and again, I know a lot of focus is pushed that way too. But strategically, when we're placing billboards, you think about that exchange up there. Just learned that, you know, there's going to be a new Loves Truck Stop or whatever going to be built up there. Be on the green, in the Green County side. It'll be right there at the, the intersection. And obviously there's a lot of other growth that's happening there. But when you think about the amount of the volume of people that come, that are now coming through that interchange, people from Monroe County coming to work every day, but again, all the visitors. Strategically placing a billboard in that area could capture a lot of outside eyes from outside of Davis County and things like that.
Yeah, I agree.
Amber, and I'm, I'm assuming that you're going to actually do this. When we see the percentages there, like Tony mentioned, for like budgeting time, you're going to have each of those categories, I'm assuming.
They're fleshed out. We already have them fleshed out. I can, like I said, I can follow up with that, yeah.
And the, the other question is, and following along with TC said, you know, we have what, 300 rooms or 320, whatever it is, that we're getting revenue off of. I, his point was, hey, we need to get better utilization. I don't know what the utilization is and we probably do somewhere, right? Hey, we know that Boggs is 75% utilized or 100%. Whatever it is. We can get that data too. I think that'd be nice. It would kind of tell us factually, hey, what is the utilization? How much can we?
How much can we prove that, or do we need additional rooms?
Okay.
Thank you. Very nice job.
And that's a good point. Before we spend money on a hotel study, you know, in our current capacity, it would be...
Any other questions?
Commissioners, council, audience?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, commissioners, anything for good of the order? If not, an entertaining motion to adjourn. A motion made by Commissioner Keith, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Council, thanks for joining us. I think having this annually or something, it would be great. It's always great hanging out with you all.